Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Right.
Oh. Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Good morning. Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Alwell?
Here.
David, or Commissioner Shotwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell, excuse me. My game is...
Well, actually, what I'd like to do, if I may, I'd like to flip-flop six and four. I know Karen has a speaker and I'd like to move her along so she can get on with her business. If there's no objections, we're going to flip-flop six and four. Karen, would you please come to the podium, explain your tax foreclosure?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to go first on the agenda. You have the packet that I sent out regarding the request from the county treasurer as well as the Chair of the Land Bank Authority to acquire four tax-foreclosed properties from the tax foreclosure cycle this year. This is not a new process. We, as in the Land Bank, have requested to acquire tax-foreclosed properties through the county's first right of refusal in the past. In the packet, I included two previous resolutions to indicate when we did that, 2007, and most recently, in 2014. So, I think we've got enough explanation as to what we're trying to accomplish. Again, the Land Bank is interested in trying to improve the communities that we acquire houses in. We've included what our intent is for these four properties. There are two properties in Blackman Township, one on Lark, one on Cardinal Crest. Those are both in the same neighborhood. I believe they're less than a block from each other. So, the Land Bank Board felt that it was a targeted area that we could make a difference. So, and I think you've got pictures included in your packet that shows you just the exterior of the houses. Now, mind you, the pictures can be deceiving. One of the houses, I believe, on Lark looks really good from the outside, but the interior is all gutted. So, the Land Bank is well aware of what needs to be done for these houses, and we are willing to do the work to rehab them, to turn around and sell them to the real estate market with the intent to get them back on the tax rolls. We have one property in Leonie Township that we're looking to acquire. It is in the Darrell Trailer Park. It's on Bellrose. Our intent would be to remove the blighted, dilapidated trailer and green space that area. That continues with our mission that we have been working with for the past seven, eight years. With Leonie Township, this would be the eighth property that we look to acquire and green space in that targeted area in that township. And then lastly, we have a house in Summit Township on Foy, and that is that we wish to acquire that, make the improvements on the inside, interior of the house, and look to sell that and remove it or put it back onto the tax rolls. You can see that the dollar amounts there are listed. When the Land Bank inquires to acquire tax-foreclosed properties, we pay the taxes. So, those units will be made whole with regard to those four properties. And I do have Pete Jansek from Blackman Township is here today, and he also serves on the Land Bank Board, but he may wish to talk to you about the properties in Blackman Township. We're excited on the part of the Land Bank to partner with the new township. We haven't partnered with Blackman Township in the past, so we've had discussions as the Land Bank Board and feel that this would be the right move for us to make. But Pete does have some background information on those two properties, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning. Actually, it's the property on Cardinal Crest that is gutted inside. The one on Lark needs more cosmetic and some maintenance issues. As was stated by Karen, the goal of the Land Bank is to help stabilize and improve neighborhoods, and I think both of these properties fit into that goal and mission. One of the things that by the Land Bank rehabbing these properties, it raises them to a point where a stable family would get in there long-term. Occupancy protects the neighborhood as opposed to it becoming possibly a rental property, which, you know, at times that can be good and at times it can be bad. But to me, the biggest thing is the fact that it gets rehabbed to the point where a long-term family would want to live there and be a part of the neighborhood. The property on Cardinal Crest, the gentleman that started the renovation on that, that's why it's gutted inside and has some, it's had some Anderson windows put in, he passed away. And unfortunately, his son passed away within a year after him passing away. So, that's why that property is sat, went through court and different things. So, that's how it ended up on the roll. So, I would just like to recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider partnering with the Land Bank to acquire these properties. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of questions about it this morning, and I talked with Pete ahead of time, and I appreciate the work at Karen's office and the explanation from Pete on it, especially when I looked at the Lark Street property. It looks like it's a fairly decent-looking on the outside, but I agree with the analysis of both of you about what the intent is. Karen, there's no concern about these ones? I mean, I see the one is 6,700 and the other is 6,500. There was a federal program we participated in before where we were taking federal dollars and putting them into properties and then ended up selling the properties for a lot less than we had into them. That's not a concern with these, though, I would assume, correct?
That is correct.
You'll make the improvements, and it'll still be marketable at a fair value, and we're not going to lose money on it, correct?
That's the goal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can I just make a note, too, that this is not the foreclosure resolution that the Board will see. You will see one at our Tuesday night meeting as well for the county. And I know we had sent the maps out, and at least one of you sent in a couple of properties that we were interested. And just, we looked at those properties FYI, and the city has already taken those properties. So, those will not be, as of right now, I have no properties in mind. So, again, take a look at the maps. If you see something that you think may strike your fancy or have, you know, a need for the county, by all means, bring it to my attention.
Mike, I had sent that email, I think, to all the Commissioners and you about several down by the fairgrounds, and there was, I think, two of them on the current list. One was a vacant lot that backs up to an alley by the medical care facility, but it's on Blackstone. And then the second was on Blackstone, I think. And there was conversation about, well, I think, good intent on our part of trying to acquire properties that should happen to come up that are down by the fairgrounds. Are we in line to receive any of those properties after the city's done with them or not?
That's still the intent, yes. And the city has not said otherwise, so my expectation is that we will ultimately end up with those properties.
Okay, because I will say that I actually drove down there and looked at them, and there are at least two parcels, I think, that were on the previous list that had houses knocked down that are now clear lots that back up to our lot that's on the west side of Blackstone that I think would be advantageous for us to have, and I hope we have follow-through with that.
Actually, we're in the process of rectifying that as well as a couple of other properties. We have two parcels actually on the fairgrounds that we're trying to clean up as well.
Well, not to belabor the point, but the one that's on Blackstone, south of Ganson, on the west side, I think it's the second or third lot, south of Ganson, is a clear lot. And again, it backs up to the alley where we've had questions or issues, and it backs up to the parking lot for the medical care facility, and especially with no house being on the property, would be advantageous for us to have, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you. But again, if anyone has any additional properties, let us know. Hopefully, by the end of the week, take another look at the map, because we need to prepare for that and put it forward. We have the resolution currently. It says zero, you know, it says there are no properties we're wishing to take, but if something pops up...
Not to hog the mic, but Mike, can we get a list of the properties that have been taken? I mean, we have the list with the maps that are highlighted. It'd be helpful, I guess, to know which one the municipalities have taken already. Would it be difficult to get a list like that? Or if even there's a separate list on what other municipalities have claimed, then we can just look at it?
We talked about that in our meeting, Mike, with Patrick Birch, and they could probably produce a map that shows the surrounding properties in that target area and who owns which parcels. So, we can, I can talk with Patrick about getting something.
Well, yeah, we're talking about the current list, and the list that properties have been taken in it would go across the whole county. I assume there's townships out there as well?
Yes.
Who may have assumed some properties?
Yeah, but like the city, they're, I'm assuming they do a resolution that says we want these properties, even if we can just get those, because we can just compare that to the list we have, is fine.
At the last meeting, they took 25 parcels, and they are going to, the city of Jackson is going to be doing another round just before July 1st.
Just before the deadline?
Just before the deadline. They're breaking it into two.
Then we won't be looking at this at our next meeting, then, will we?
Well, no, we need to do this, if we were going to take a property, you'd need to do it before July 1st.
That's correct. That's the deadline that we have.
That puts us in a bind if, because, you know...
Well, so...
...or first, before we are.
Correct.
We could be after the same property is what it comes down to.
What's their deadline?
July 1st. Their deadline is July 1st.
I can speak to Patrick, though, just, you know, outside of, you know...
I'm confused.
Go ahead, Delane.
Yeah, we have the same deadline. So, if we're going to act at our Tuesday meeting, we'd be acting before the city's chances pass, correct? I mean, that is...
Yes, I can tell you that the city is looking at taking more houses again from this batch of tax-foreclosed properties. The last city council meeting, they took 25. They're waiting for my office to evict the tenants in the other batch of properties that they're looking to acquire. That's one of the guidelines for the hardest-hit program, that they have to make sure that those properties that they acquire are vacated. So, that's why we're kind of, this is, this year's a little bit different, but we're working and partnering with the city to get those properties vacated so that they can take them.
If I may chime in, I understand it, and Karen, you can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but is the deadline is the same for everyone?
Yes.
It's just they have priorities. State is first, then it's the township, city, and villages, and then the county. So, if we were all three competing for one space, the state would win. If the state's not there, it'd be one of the other municipalities over the county. That doesn't mean we won't, shouldn't declare that we want that property. It's just they have a chance to take it before July 1st, you know?
So, even if we at our Tuesday night meeting decide we want a property, they can come in before July 1st, act and say, "We want it first"?
That is correct, yes. And if I may, with regard to the two properties that you were talking about, Commissioner Alwell, if the city is willing to take down a blighted structure utilizing those dollars that they have, we're in communication with the city about these land swaps and land assemblies, so we have some concerted strategic plan with regard to that. Let the city take down the blighted properties, then we have a vacant, clear lot, then at that point, we can continue the conversations with the city and say, "We're interested in this property that is in the fairground, by the fairground," as an example. So, the conversations have started, they will continue to be ongoing, so that's just food for thought as well.
Yeah, I'm good with that. And in this case, there's at least two of those that are vacant right now.
Yes.
Or three.
They took the structures down last year.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Does that help clarify?
Hi, Karen.
Yes.
I'm a little more concerned about the evictions that need to take place. Are there a lot of these homes that people are living in?
Every cycle, we go through the eviction process. So, this isn't a new process. When I foreclose on the property is March 31st, usually within the first three weeks of April, I'm making contact with houses or structures that may have occupants in them. At that time, I serve a notice on the tenants or occupants, former owners, whoever's in the house, giving them a 30-day termination of tenancy. Then we start the process of, you know, they've got the 30-day notice, they can go ahead and look for other options. The property's been foreclosed on. Right now, we're in the process of going through the court process of the eviction. So, last week, I spent two or three days at the courthouse going through the eviction hearings. We have eviction hearings Thursday and again some next week. So, that's not a new process. I've always done the evictions. In my mind, it makes the property more marketable if there's not a person living in the house. Yes?
So, clarification, I heard you just say the city demolished the homes last year, right?
I believe at the end of the year, they did, utilizing those funds.
But they don't belong to the city. They didn't belong to the city, then, correct?
I'd have to double-check. I want to make sure that I don't misspeak, but they, the city has been taking down the blighted structures. Now, what has happened last year is they acquired the properties before they took them down. In the past, that wasn't always the case. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Rice?
Karen, I just wanted to know, this kind of goes with what John was talking about. Karen and I have been talking about this. Actually, when people get evicted, there really is no process or financial means to actually even help them get housing. Apparently, there are some communities that there's money to help people to find someplace else to live, but in this case, hypothetically, if somebody's out the door in 30 days and they haven't found a place to live, I guess we have no idea where they end up.
That is correct, Commissioner Rice. We talked about post-foreclosure options, and I wish that Jackson County had more resources or options with the post-foreclosure. Each year, when we do the evictions, we do deal with people who are displaced, and it's not a pleasant task. I know for Washtenaw County, they do have a very strong pre-foreclosure prevention as well as post-foreclosure programs, but maybe someday we'll get there.
But Karen, it's my understanding in Washtenaw County, that's for owners of the property, not for renters. In Washtenaw County, the landlords are still held to a much higher standard there than here in Jackson, first off, and second, Washtenaw's working to save people who are the owners of the property, not, if I was living in my house, they would come and assist me, whereas if I was the landlord, they're not, they're a little bit disinterested in assisting with the landlord, but they want to make sure the tenant has someplace to go. Am I correct on that?
I did not know that they differentiated between homeowners and tenants. You know, I, from my perspective, the tenants really are in a difficult situation, because half the time, more than half the time, they're not even aware that the landlord didn't pay the taxes. So, I come knocking on the door, and I tell them that the house has been foreclosed. So, you know, we try to give time, we try to give proper notice so that they have time to move out, but sometimes that's not always a good landing spot for the tenants that are Any other questions? Thank you for the interest.
Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
Next up, Cascades Phase Two update. I believe Steve is going to handle this.
I wanted to make Commissioners aware that we have received a Weatherwax Challenge Grant and are putting that money together, and at this time, the Parks Director is working on a modified proposal, which will probably have an unveiling sometime this summer for a renovated, or really, a new site pump house and moving forward with Phase Two. We want to recognize the Weatherwax Foundation, Emmens Garbage Service, and Mackey for the assistance on this property and program, and we look forward to other refuse companies taking the example of Emmens and making a donation also in the future with a challenge, we hope. On that, I just wanted to make everyone aware that we are moving forward with it. It's not something that's come to an end. I know you did hear that we did decide not to have a fundraising luncheon, but that decision was made based on participation more than anything else. So, it's on its way forward, and it looks like, hopefully, sometime this fall, we'll see groundbreaking on that pump house and the ribbon-cutting for that. That concludes my update. Unless someone has found $8 million that they'd like to give to the Cascades, we'd be more than happy then to do all the renovation at once. I do want to thank our Facilities Department and the Administrator Controller for finding the emergency funds to repair the cement work so that we could be open on time this year.
Okay, continuing on with the agenda, assuming no one has any additional questions for the Chairman. We're back to the SRI resolution. Sadly, it is the third time we've had to do this. You recall, the first was this time last year. Leonie still has not paid. I personally do not believe they're really any closer to resolution, having now met with the judge. I know they're still having conversations, but, you know, we've been having conversations for the last couple of years at least on this issue. I've asked our attorney, just FYI, to move it forward, whatever you can do, move it forward. The judge needs to make a decision from our perspective. Somebody needs to move it forward, because this board here, this body, has voted, decided what you believe is the correct course, and now we've petitioned the court to move it forward, and thus far, it hasn't. So, with that in mind, though, we still have a July 1st bond payment to make, and you'll notice in the resolution, we also included in there, as was suggested, the prior bonds that have not been, or bond payments that have not been paid. With this payment here, Leonie would owe the county $692,646.34, and that doesn't include the penalty portion. The penalty portion would be added on whatever the total ultimately is. But still, we're pushing $700,000 after this payment of July 1st. So, we're looking for a motion per this staff report.
Looking for a motion to, don't you need the resolution to pass now?
It doesn't have to pass now, as long as we do it before July 1st. I like it now, because that gives them 10 days' notice before the due date, so yes.
So, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 06-16.12 to issue notice to the township, township default under the Jackson County Wastewater Disposal Facility Southern Regional Interceptor Section Bond Contract and Act 185 of Public Act 1957.
So moved.
We have a motion in support. Any questions to the resolution or the motion? Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, for the Administrator, again, I renew my prior comments about the thought of seeking a legal opinion on our ability to declare that the Southern Interceptor is ours. Leonie's not making the payments. What would it take to do that?
I can tell you that I've had those conversations with our attorney. His response is the same now as it was then, and that is not a remedy that is spelled out in the contract that we signed. There's remedies for them not paying, and that's what we're pursuing. What he's basically saying is legally, we don't have a remedy beyond that.
I guess personally, I'd like to see that in writing on what our options are. It may not be in the bond contract, but it doesn't seem much dissimilar to somebody that doesn't make the payments on their house, on their property. If they quit making the payments, they don't own the house. And I'd like something more formal than just conversations, to be honest with you.
Well, we can ask him to write that up. It's, you know, I can say, the only difference is...
It's just me saying that. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I...
Dave?
I feel strongly about it, yes.
Would you be comfortable voting on the resolution here and then entertaining a motion to that effect?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm not saying stop this resolution here, so that's fine.
Okay. Any further comments? Yep. Resolutions passed unanimously. Commissioner Alwell?
I guess I'd make a motion to direct that the Administrator seek a legal opinion from our attorney on the potential of our ability to declare that the Southern Interceptor is ours by default of the person that's supposed to be making, or the entity's supposed to be making the payments on it, and seek a legal opinion from them, not just under the bond contract, but under law.
the county may assume ownership of the SRI and sell it to another entity if it's interested in buying, correct?
You're spot-on.
All set. I'm going to let the clerk get it recorded. Assume ownership of the other pipe. SRI. Palacek?
Motion made by Alwell, supported by Potchite. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Duckham?
As Administrator Overton said, this isn't listed as one of the options in the SRI contract. I agree with that. However, the Board passed a resolution a few months back that was in the contract, and the judge didn't accept, doesn't appear to be accepting that either. So, I don't know if it's in the contract, if it makes a great deal of difference or not, as long as it's a resolution legally passed by the Board. It's my thoughts. Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mentioned this before, again, from my perspective, this is in the judicial system, and for us as a legislative part of government at the county level, for us to think that we should be able to just step in and potentially remove this from its current, from its currently being bonded by Leonie Township, and as the recommendation from the Administrator states, as we all know, we've been over this a million times, I can't wait till it's over, but, you know, it states right in there, you have three townships are supposed to pay Leonie, and then Leonie is responsible to pay the county. So, in some respects, we could say that the three townships signed off to pay Leonie and didn't do it, and we can say that Leonie's responsible to pay us, even though they didn't get paid by the three townships. So, in respect, you know, to me, we've got quite an issue there. My understanding is negotiations are completely broken off. Columbia has no desire to play, and it's going to be back in the judge's hands. Maybe Mike can add to that, but I would hope that the judge would make a final decision here, that, I would hope that he would order some type of action, because obviously, at this level, with this being put in the hands of us county Commissioners, I just have some real concerns about why some of these actions are being taken, and so I'm certainly not going to support this. I suspect I'll be in the minority, but it won't be the first time. Thank you.
Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I specifically didn't mention a township by name on who hasn't paid. I think we addressed that in the prior resolution demanding that they pay. But regardless of that, and regardless of who isn't paying, we're not being paid for it. And it's just to say, okay, we have made a huge investment of county taxpayer dollars and agreed to back the funding of this, and whoever's supposed to be paying for it isn't. And until it's paid for, I think it's pretty clear that it's ours, and it becomes somebody else's once it's paid for. And it'd be no different than if the county had a piece of property and it wasn't being paid for, we'd probably have Karen, our treasurer, going over to take it back and auction it. And I just, it's just pretty simple and clear to me. I mean, I'm not trying to say who is more at blame in it, it just, and I haven't mentioned any townships.
That's one of the things that I truly respect about this commission, but yeah, I agree with Commissioner Leitner. We can get, if it ends up we get the legal opinion, so be it. I don't see where that's going to play a role in this or a factor in this. You know, it's not like we're going to be, you know, we can gather 25% of Leonie's revenue, but beyond that, it's not like we're going to, you know, I just can't imagine that somebody's going to, well, we're going to put the Southern Regional Interceptor up for bid. I just, I have a real problem with that. There hasn't been any entities that has any desire for it. I'm sure Jackson County has no desire for it, and the only one that's ever even mentioned it is Columbia, which I think that'd be a total disaster, so, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alexander.
So Mr. Overton and Commissioner Howell, I'm looking for clarification to make sure I'm understanding. Mr. Overton, you're stating that the attorney has advised us that that is not a feasible option, and Commissioner Howell, you're just asking for that to be put in writing?
If the Chair is okay with dialogue back and forth, yes, I am looking for that in writing, and not just restricted to the language that's in the bond contract, but all options that are open and viable to us.
And my response is the same as previously stated, and that is, this came up before, I spoke to the attorney on the phone, said, hey, here's a situation, can we, they're not paying, can we say, hey, we own it? And his response is, no, you have a legal contract that you signed that says, that outlines the remedies available to the county, and one of the remedies is not take ownership. It doesn't say that. He says, so you really can't do that beyond what the contract says. Now, we do not have that in writing, and basically what I would be doing is calling to him and ask, or I'd probably just send him an email, Tim, we're looking for, you know, and he'd send it to us in writing. That's really what we're looking for.
Any further questions from Commissioners? Clerk has posted the vote. Please vote.
Madam Clerk, mine disappeared from my screen. I may have bumped it. I want to vote yea on it if, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Overton, thank you. Next up, we have an update, a budget update by our Finance Director, Jim, welcome.
The PowerPoint, the-
Yeah, that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, what I'd like to do today is just kind of review, broadscope, where the money comes from, what we spend the money on in general. Also give you an update on how 2015 went, and also look at our budget calendar for upcoming events. We're always put in here in the presentation, the board's priorities, just so as a benchmark, so that you know how the categories fit into the overall strategies that the board has established. Like to look at revenues, we can look at revenues by different kinds of categories, and when I say by categories, I mean by the items you see on the monthly financial statements, general government, public safety, judicial, that type of thing. General government, one comment here is that the general government revenues are revenues that would not be restricted for any other purpose. In other words, it's a general fund dollars that the Commissioners can appropriate based on what they decide. Looking at the same pie, if you will, but sliced in a different manner, we look at the revenues by type, and we can see that property taxes are 48% of our total budget, intergovernmental of 16%. Intergovernmental would be mainly state revenue sharing and some federal and state grant dollars that run through the general fund and so forth. So again, this is two different ways to look at the revenues that are received by the general fund. Looking at the expenditures, if we look at it by category, and again, these are the categories you see on the subtotals on the monthly financial statements and so forth, and how the budget is adopted, we see that public safety, that's jail and sheriff's operations, 30% of our total cost in the general fund. Judicial, that's the courts prosecutor, that's 22% of the total budget and so forth. And then general government, that's everybody else, that's 16%. Again, if we look at this by type of expense, our functional expenses that we have, personnel costs, that is salaries and fringes in the general fund, compose 58% of the total dollars we spend. Then the rest are supplies, contractual, and so forth. So in general, that's where the money goes. I think in the past, you've seen total dollars that you spend, 40-some million dollars we spend on the general fund, but I thought it'd be well to kind of look at the total percents to see, put that in perspective.
Jim?
Yes.
I'm backing up one quick second there. On those transfers out, 19%, so that would include 700,000 we send to Lifeways?
Yes, that's right, yeah. It's a 810 to Lifeways, and also other transfers that go to our internal service funds to fund defined benefit, to fund retiree health care and so forth, to fund childcare fund, for example. This is a schedule that I think you've seen in the past, and that's the net cost of county programs, and again, this is sorted by dollars, starting with small to large. This was updated using 2016 information, that's 2016 budget information. In the past, it was based on 2015, and is a guide to kind of put things again in perspective as to where the money goes.
Again, if I may chime in there, Jim, when you say net cost, you mean that that's, so for instance, I'm thinking of the contracts we have for law enforcement, with law enforcement townships. That's subtracting that out of this, correct?
That's correct.
The expense and revenue, got it. And so it's net.
And so forth. Now, taking a look at 2015, our budget said that we would use 1.2 million dollars of reserves for the year. After the audit has been complete, the actual results say that we will use 1.2 million dollars of reserves. So we came out pretty close. We actually came out about 68,000 to the good. In other words, we spent a little bit less than we anticipated. Yes, sir. Commissioner Rice.
Thanks, Jim. I'd just like to back up a second here in regards to what the Administrator said. When you show county sheriff and road patrol, does that include the sheriff and under sheriff's salary?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So if I average it out, we got, excuse me, if I average it out, we got 3,700,000 there, okay? Minus their salaries, whatever that may be, maybe throw the two together, maybe we're down to 3,400,000. Those two people are mandated to be part of the Sheriff's Department. The county jail is mandated to be part of the Sheriff's Department. So when we start talking about the county, the Sheriff's Department being the quote-unquote "largest," I think we need to take into consideration, the sheriff, the under sheriff, and the county jail have to be there statutorily, and there's nothing we can do about it. So in reality, we're looking at maybe 3,400,000 when it comes to our actual patrol. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thanks, Jim.
There's another schedule that was sent to you here, I'll bring that up, and this was also done previously. Yes.
Question, Jim, on the county sheriff and road patrol in jail, it's a statutory obligation we have, but the degree that we have it is our choice, correct?
Yes.
So even though it's mandated, the degree we decide what it's mandated to, the number, is our choice?
Yes, I believe you have to, see, what is the term? You have to have-
Minimal service level is the term. The Michigan Supreme Court has ruled minimal service level, so those mandated services have to be funded, but they do not define minimal service level. It's not a place I ever want to have to go, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's, what that means, yeah, what that means is debatable, and I think in other counties, that's been challenged, in other words, yeah.
The Supreme Court made it very clear, because there's been multiple challenges in the past, years and years ago, that the county Commissioners are in charge, when it comes right down to it. When it comes to budget, county Commissioners are in charge, they decide what the budget will be, they decide what the minimal service level will be. Again, it's not a place we would ever want to find ourselves, minimal service level, but I suspect the way local government funding is in Michigan, more and more communities will find themselves in that in the years to come.
I'd like to follow up on the question that was asked prior. If we're going to start talking about the salaries of elected officials or departments had, under the net cost of county program slide, the one prior-
Yes.
Can we make the assumption then, that under medical examiner, for instance, that that salary is included there?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So how or why, all right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we had that clarification. So we are comparing of like services and expenses?
Yes. The other, I brought up the other schedule which you have, and which takes the same data, in other words, the same dollars, but divvies it up based on whether it's non-mandated internal service, or whether it's other.
Jim, if I may, that's a separate file on your system, guys, pull up.
Yeah, I couldn't get that into the PowerPoint, wouldn't fit in there. And also, in addition to that, is there's, I believe, another table that talks about each item and with a description of the functions. That's also on the handout. So anyway, this is the same, kind of puts it in perspective to say, you look at the mandated, and then look at everything else, and that's really what you have to work with in terms of making changes.
You've all seen this particular slide, so, you know, by all means, have questions, feel free to ask, but otherwise, Jim, continue your PowerPoint, please.
Okay, then we started to talk about the results for 2015, and again, we came out a little better than anticipated by 69,000 in the general fund. If we also look at the fund balance available, at the beginning of 2015, we started with 13 million in the general fund fund balance. 2015, we used 1.2 million. Our budget for 2016 says we will use 705,000. Our budget for 2017 says we'll use over a million dollars. That leaves a balance, projected balance, at the end of 2017 of 10 million plus in the general fund.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike, can we go back to the slide with the graph just for a second? And I'm looking at the emergency dispatch line, and if memory serves me right, it's about, what, 1.3 to operate? That, and the offset is the phone surcharges that we currently get?
Yes.
And with the public passing the surcharge, that should pretty much zero that out then, correct? That's 732,000?
It will for 2017. For 2016, it does not, because we anticipate about 700, 775,000 of additional revenue. The numbers that are shown here would be, again, net of the budgeted amount of 775.
And that's just because we're halfway through the year when they passed it, right? Right. Thank you.
Right. So anyway, at the end of 2017, projected fund balance of 10 million. That leaves us with 238,000 above the Commissioner policy of maintaining 24% in reserves, 24% of expenditures.
And a good rule of thumb, and correct me, Jim, if you think I'm an error here, I believe it's around 400,000 per 1%. So if you think, well, we can go to 22, that's like 400,000, that's going to be 800,000, 2%.
Yes. And also, the, you know, the policy of 24% is a prudent policy. The GFOA has said, well, it should be two months of operations, which is about 18% of reserves. However, if you get below, much below the 24% in reserves, then there starts to be a cash flow issue certain times of the year in the general fund, because again, if you recall, how we receive our revenues is skewed toward the end of the year. Yes, I'm sorry.
Mike, isn't our policy actually a range of 18 to 24%?
And the 238,000 left over here is consistent with what was communicated. It's about 3,000 different than what Adam presented last time and so forth. So we're pretty much on track based on the plans that we've made. 2017, there is one change that was not incorporated in the budget at the time, because we did not have the information, and that is the annual required contribution to the defined benefit pension plan. Now that we have the actual report, that was 6 million. The previous year was 5.9 million. So in the budget, we have to put in an additional 140,000 in the budget. I planned on an increase of 150,000, however, the annual contribution, required contribution went up by 290,000. So at least it's not 2 million, like we encountered two, three years ago. I also included in the presentation, and again, there's a separate file that's more readable, that shows the budget calendar for the remaining summer and fall, and then basic, there's a couple of important dates, in other words, the adoption would be in September at the board meeting, public hearing, hearing previous to that, we'd be presenting a draft budget in August and so forth. Backing up prior to that, June and July, we'll be spending times with department heads and so forth, going over the numbers for 18. So the idea is, again, we have to revisit 17 to make any necessary changes that we know about now versus what we knew last year, and also present a draft of 18.
Any questions, Jim?
I believe it's around 400,000 per 1%. So if you're, you know, if you think, well, we can go to 22, that's like 400,000, that's gonna be 800,000, 2%.
Yes, uh, and also the, you know, the policy of 24% is, is a prudent, uh, policy, uh, the GFPA has said, well, it should be two months of operations, which is about 18% of reserves, however, if you get below, much below the 24% of, uh, in reserves, then there, there starts to be a cash flow issue certain times of the year in the general fund, because, again, if you recall, the, how we receive our revenues, uh, is skewed toward the end of the year, so, yes, I'm sorry.
Mike, isn't our policy actually a range of 18 to 24%?
And, uh, the 238,000, um, left over here is consistent with what was communicated, it's, uh, about 3,000 dollars different than what Adam presented last time, and so forth, so we're pretty much on track based on, uh, the plans, uh, that we've made. Uh, 2017, there is one change that, um, was not incorporated in the budget at the time, because we did not have the information, and that is the annual required contribution to the defined benefit pension plan, now that we have the actual report, that was 6 million dollars, uh, the previous year was, uh, 5.9 million dollars, uh, so in the budget, we have to, uh, put in an additional 140,000 in the budget, I planned on an increase of 150, however, the annual contribution, required contribution went up by 290,000, so, um, at least it's not 2 million dollars like we, uh, encountered, uh, two, three years ago. Uh, I also included in the presentation, and again, there's a separate, uh, file that's more readable, that shows the budget calendar for the remaining, uh, summer and fall, and the basic, uh, there's a couple of important dates, in other words, the adoption would be in September at the board meeting, uh, public hearing, hearing previous to that, we'd be presenting a draft budget in August, and, and so forth, backing up prior to that, June and July, we'll be spending time with department heads and so forth, going over the numbers for 18. So the idea is, again, we have to revisit 17 to make any necessary changes that we know about now versus what we knew last year, and also, uh, present a draft of 18.
Any questions, Jim? As always, please feel free to get with the administrator controller's office and with questions, and he will then share them with the rest of us if there are any. I do want to thank you, Jim, for your effort and work on this, I had a conversation with the auditor, and 15's coming in very good, in a good shape, and I think, uh, you should be commended for your due diligence.
Thank you.
Last item of business here, I, I would like to request the board that they give consideration to moving back the July meetings one week, our study session's scheduled for July 5th, and I would like to move that to July 12th, which then correspond, correspondingly moves the other meetings, um, any objections to that? If not, I'll go ahead and make the posting, uh, so everyone's aware we're doing it. Terrific, thank you. You wanna pick us up? Other, yeah, other item?
Are there any items to come before the board of commissioners' study session, uh, to the admin, to the administrator controller's office, from commissioners? Okay, anything going on at the fairgrounds, sir?
Well, the 18th, there's a sheep showcase, uh, that's a Saturday, it's put on by the Supreme Port FFA, so we're welcoming them back to our fairgrounds, at least for that, so that's a, that's a positive, um, other than that, tickets are on sale for all the shows, so even the dirt shows are on sale, we have the track, uh, monster trucks, we have a new rodeo, and we have, of course, the Jeff Dunham, we have a few tickets left for that, we have Five Finger Death Punch, um, still have some tickets for that, and we have Nelly and Vanilla Ice tickets, plenty of those, so come out and, I guess, purchase those.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just wanted to invite everybody out to an event this Thursday at the Michigan Theater, it's called Wrap the Vote, it's a voter registration and education program, uh, with some entertainment involved, so I would want to invite everybody out, I, I sent a email to everybody with the flyer attached.
Okay, second opportunity for public comment, any public comment?
Peter Blummer, um, wanted to address a little bit what, what Michael said about the county's, um, obligation to fund at certain minimal levels, um, I believe the court, um, the Michigan Supreme Court, it was Wayne County versus Wayne County Sheriff, who at that time was William Lucas, and, um, the court upheld the county commissioner's right to set funding levels, um, and, um, so you have the ability to cut the sheriff's department's budget, I just want you to know that.
Any other public comment?
Todd Britton with Leoni Township, um, I'm really not glad to see this happen, but now, at least, the county firsthand sees how Leoni felt, we made the bond payments on that Southern Interceptor, over 2 million dollars were, were owed by those three townships, according to the contract, and now you guys are in the same position that we were put in, and I'm not glad to see that happen, but now you guys can kind of understand how we feel, we, we're not gonna probably, unless a judge says we're gonna get the money that we paid, we won't see the money that we've spent out, and now you guys are in that position, you did have an opportunity, and, and it didn't happen, but we could've came up with a compromise and tried to get all the payments going forward, um, and I guess, if you did put this up to where Columbia, Hanover, and Liberty could buy the Southern Interceptor, they're not making payments now, they haven't made payments in the past, other than a small portion, I, I just don't where, understand where you would feel you're gonna get paid going forward, and you're probably gonna be in the same boat again, um, so I, I just, I'm sorry Leoni is doing this, but we're forced to, we don't, we ran out of money, we drained our, it was routine and non-routine maintenance that our residents have paid for over 30-some years, that was built up, and that's where the money that would've went towards the payments went, and now it's depleted for replacement of our lines and things like that, and it, it, it's just frustrating, and now you guys are feeling the frustration that we feel, so the sooner the judge makes a ruling, I, I think that'll remedy the situation with you and hopefully with us also, so thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comments now close, oh, I'm sorry, Regina?
Regina from Nonprofit Network, uh, I'm here on, uh, the request of Commissioner Alexander to, uh, I guess, inform the, uh, county commissioners that United Way and Nonprofit Network did a series of community conversations, focus groups with those who live in poverty, and, uh, their issues are extreme in the areas of housing, transportation, and childcare, and it's, uh, preventing employment and, uh, creating barriers to employment, and so I, um, didn't know if you wanted anything more, it was a brief conversation about coming here, but, uh, the, uh, the conversations are public documents, um, and I hope you've shared them.
Any other, any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. No motion, support, all in favor? Opposed, duly carried.